Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. As most of you probably know, the power of power is in data. Power is one of the core of our household. Also, I appreciate your cooperation and where the base gathering is required by standard.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Brazil's stand on nation under God and visible liberty and justice for all.
Again, this is a public session for regular hours for the board of all sessions. Can you hear me right? Right, can you hear me? Okay, first up on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda, please? Ashley, take the roll, please.
Bryant.
Yes.
Holmroth. Yes. Fitz.
Yes.
Rediger. Yes. Saunders here. Straley. Yes. Barrett.
Yes. Section 3.2, action items from the closed session, I believe there are, correct? Oh, I'm sorry. Closed session minutes. Can we get a motion to approve due to the closed session minutes?
Salute. Excellent.
Ashley?
Straley. Yes. Saunders. Yes. Rediger. Yes. Fitz. Yes. Bryant. Barrett.
Yes. All right, section four. We have a section 4.1 is a public hearing on a proposal to permit e-learning in lieu of emergency or snow days. This is a public hearing that is pursuant to a new state statute, I believe. And so Doug, can you want to explain what's going on here?
Yeah, we, this allows us to do, can you hear me? What this allows us to do is on snow days allows us to provide e-learning to our students so we don't have to have another day longer in the school year. And so they're able to get their instruction online with our teachers and not having to add an additional day to the school year. We also have these plans online for everybody to see.
Is there any discussion about the public hearing or the, you have a proposal, correct? Or is this, do we, we need to vote on, right?
Yes, we do.
And the proposal is what, Doug?
The proposal is to adopt, to ask about the e-learning.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion about the e-learning plan for emergency or snow days?
What are the options? Are we doing live streaming? E-learning to the board?
It's not going to be.
Yeah, come on. So there are the talkroom.
Learning will be asynchronous on these days. Our teachers will be available for instruction or to support students via email, via video chat from 9:00 to 11:30 and then again from 12:30 to 3:00. We will provide all of their work, both in digital, through Canvas, or we will also provide paper copies for all students in grades K through six. We want to acknowledge and recognize that families may have access issues, may have other commitments that may kind of cause a little bit of delay in being able to complete the assignments. So for our students in grades K through six, they will have, they will turn in their work that they completed at the end of the third day if they return it in person, money. And for our students in grades seven through 12, they will submit their work at the end of the first day that they return to home in person.
Well, Doug, it's last year and the motivation behind that was also we'd get much more in-depth instruction during the year, continuation of lessons that are currently going as things will be tied up to the end of the year. Could be a moot point as perhaps we won't have snow days, but if we do, this is something we can do.
And so what's the alternative? We would, if we don't approve the e-learning plan, we would just have regular snow days where the
You'd have a regular snow day, a tack Monday, or at the end of the school year. And what we typically see at the end of the school year is a decrease in attendance. Many times our families have arranged, they go off on our calendar, even though there are times when we say provide a little buffer, often in case, they'll take those cases and understand it themselves because parent work schedules and times are hard to find in time. So it's just, it's a way for continued instruction and not have that in the end. Not to say it'd be a wasted day, but it's to say that it's e-learning that we can work on in the middle of the school year.
So I'm inclined to support this just from the standpoint of, I think it's, makes more sense than trying to extend a school year beyond the planned calendar date. My question is procedural in nature. Just if this is a public hearing on this and it's the first time it's been on our agenda, why does it fall before the public comment period so then there's no opportunity to have heard from the public on this issue prior to us having the vote on the resolution? I mean, again, I'm inclined to support it, but if there were people that wanted to comment on this particular issue, we're in a position where the first time we've discussed it is right now and we've had no opportunity for public input.
Well, you know, if you would be more comfortable changing, modifying the agenda to move it past the public comment for agenda items, I would certainly entertain a motion to modify the agenda to do it.
I would like to move to modify the agenda to move it after section 5.1, I think it is. Or no, I'm sorry, it's 6.1. Yes, 6.1, and I would support that as well.
So is that a second?
Yes.
All right, Ashley, would you take the role on the motion to modify the agenda to move item 4.1 to be voted on after section 6.1? So let's call that new section 6.1.1.
Fitz.
Yes.
Rediger. Yes. Holmroth. Yes. Saunders. Yes. Bryant.
Yes.
Straley. Yes. And Barrett.
Yes. All right, we'll come back to that agenda item. Next section is section five, the initial, and Charlotte is going to present the tentative, the FY22 tentative budget to the board.
My goal here tonight is to introduce you to our tentative budget and to set the public hearing date for your September board meeting by me presenting it this evening. It allows the public the 30-day comment period prior to its adoption in September. If you move to the first slide, Ashley. And I always want to review my budget methodology that I use when I create this. It's always conservative in nature. Revenues are estimated low. Expenditures are estimated high. Striving a balance between revenues and expenditures within the funds and numerous competing priorities. The FY22 budget priorities are very similar to those that have been over the last three years since the last strategic plan was adopted. Maintain safety fireback for staff of students. Expand successful education programs and opportunities for students, including virtual programs. Invest in technology for the 21st century learning environment. Invest in professional development for staff. Additional staff to meet goals of the DOD strategic plan and maintain fiscal stability. I want to introduce the projects that administration feels are critical for this next budget year. In the next two slides, we review those projects. We have the GHS and GMS halo sensors, the CES fencing, the GHS air handler replacement, new floorboards and GHS softball and baseball, the GIS and GMS access road, which would include the new maintenance building of demolition of the current structure. Next slide, please. Completion of GHS chiller project, which was started this year. GHS roof repair phase two, the district office roof, district wide air quality testing, potential capital asset acquisition related costs. Cumulative these projects over $3 million. And we conservatively estimate that we will get $3.6 million in one cent county sales tax revenue. And I propose in my budget to pay for these $3 million out of the one cent county sales tax. In addition, we have a GMS special and vocational room project that's targeted with excess bond funds and not the one cent county sales tax. Next slide, Ashley. These are routine annual grants. They're estimated at $1,974,517. Yearly childhood block grant, the IDEA flow-through grant with IDEA Room Board, IDEA preschool grant. We have Title I, Title II, and Title IV grants, the DHS debt grant. Next slide. These grant applications are estimated to bring in $278,000. Dairy Council, Action for Healthy Kids, the SCCC rate for telecommunications, Round One, the State Board of Education School Maintenance Grant Project, and the Illinois Secretary of State Light Rate Program. Next slide, Ashley. These grant applications represent what came about due to COVID. The top one is, I've given the different acts that associated with these ESTA funds. We have ESTA II, which is roughly $1.2 million. We have until September 30th of 2023 to spend that money. ESTA III, $2.8 million, and we have till September 30th of 2024 to spend that money. We have an FY22 Emergency Connectivity Fund Grant, which will be in excess of $700,000, should be approved, and we think our chances look pretty good to bet. These grants are a total of $4,774,93 over the life of the grants. Next slide. Total estimated revenues are $58,109,848, with the levy being the driving force of $37,223,182, or 64%. Other local is 12%. Total local revenue between levy and the other local is 76% over our budget. State evidence-based funding formula, 13%. Other state revenue, 4%. Federal is 7%. So the combined state and federal clients that will fall to us are $14,121,275, or 34% of our budget. Next slide, please. FY22 expenditures are estimated at $57,922,220, with the education fund being the largest, a 70%, that's a $40,566,349. Operations and maintenance stands at 8.7%. The excess bonds is 0.2%. Debt service, 9.2%. Transportation is 3.8%. IMRF and Social Security Fund, 2.9%. Capital projects, 5.2%. Next slide, please. So if we look at those expenditures by object, how are we going to spend those monies in those various funds? Taxes and benefits together total $36,883,490, or 63.8% of our budget. Purchased services is 6.1%. Supply, 7.4%. Capital projects, 6.1%. Other, which relates to bond interest and principal, special education tuition, CTE programs, that's at 15.5%. Non-capitalized equipment is 1.1%. Next slide, please. And here I want to point out the timing of levy revenues and the impact on this budget. In May and June of 2020, the county allowed taxpayers the opportunity to pay property taxes in September. This pushed those revenues from May and June into our FY21 school year. And in May and June of 2021, the property tax cloture rate rose from the normal 49% to 52%, making room for our stimulus money availability. These two events created a large increase in FY21 levy collections. Note the timing of the second event shortens the July through November 2022 collections. The FY20 budget will also see fewer May, June 2022 collections due to the CPI of 1.4% compared to last year's CPI of 2.3%. Next slide. So this slide represents the projected FY22 fund balances with the un-audited, which are now audited, you will see that presentation next month. These are the fund balances at the end of this year with the estimated FY22 revenues, expenditures, and the projected fund balance at the end of FY22. And items I wanted to call to your attention. The EDF fund will have an estimated deficit of $443,925. Without the timing difference on levy collections, the EDF fund would have had a surplus of $240,301. The OAN F fund will have an estimated deficit of $304,840. $219,000 is directly related to the time of an E-rate grant where the monies will receive in June, but we may get expenditure in July. That coupled with the time difference on levy collections, we would have had a surplus in the OAN F fund of $43,202. And once again, I want to call to your attention the capital projects fund will book a surplus of $600,000 with the intent of growing that fund, while addressing infrastructure needs of the district. Do I have any questions?
I have a question, and I don't know if this is really necessarily directed at you as much as maybe Doug and potentially the members of the board that have been here a little longer than I have, but when we go back and look at some of the capital projects, and we talked about this at the Finance Committee meeting last month, but when we look at some of the things like the access road and the scoreboard and the air handler replacement, is there some sort of a strategic planning process that prioritizes these projects? I've been thinking specifically about that access road. It's a, it's a big ticket item. I'm not suggesting it's not necessary, but who decides and how is it decided what projects take priority and therefore going to be funded this year? And who decides that's a more important project than, say, I don't know, I know we talked about some needed middle school track replacement. Just how is that process done? And I'm a little uncomfortable as a board member supporting or voting on funding big capital projects without seeing and being a part of some sort of a planning and prioritization budget process.
Yeah, two ways. Couple of things happen. One is a lot of these projects are brought about by our facility management to talk about sometimes under the greatest needs. For some time, chillers were, air handlers and things, so we replaced many of those things. The other one is finding what funds are available to purchase, you know, new items, equipment or buildings. So there is a process. One of the things that I think can even be a little bit of a judgment is turn around the board members. When you have any boards' priorities sometimes shift based on what they might see happen. And so for some time, the road was important to us, smaller groups were important to us, was because they were trying to mitigate some of the traffic flow. And as soon as we could get that in, that allowed the traffic flow to exist and perhaps mitigate something just we see in the middle school, GIS. But those projects are discussed, I know, just those at the grounds meetings. Mike Dobbs does have a list, a strategic list of what those priorities are. And if you haven't seen those yet, we can certainly get those from your hands. We need to have a larger discussion about that. We can, but I know that as the boards change, those priorities shift as well.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's maybe my comment, or I don't know whether it's a comment or a question, but more so. So I've seen a list of possible projects that could be funded out of the 1% sales tax. What I haven't seen is the prioritization. And I do think that it's important that our current board is part of that prioritization because clearly, you know, we all came in with priorities and want to be sure that the things we're voting on are in line with those priorities.
We can certainly revisit, revisit that and those priorities again. And I'm sure those shift again. You know, that often happens.
I'm sure they are. I just think there needs to be some opportunity for us to do some of that kind of planning. And I would suggest I know more than the facility team in the district. I just would like to be part of that conversation before I'm asked to vote on these kinds of things.
So could we try to reschedule the retreat that brought you?
Yes, yes.
Or alternatively, we could discuss it at the Finance Committee.
Okay.
Put that on the primary agenda point of the prioritization projects and capital expenditures.
Or culmination of the two. It's always the grounds with the finance.
And I'll just say in terms of the access road, as a former member of the Facilities and Grounds Committee, I know that Mike Dobbs has discussed that on more than one occasion, more than one meeting. And we actually, I think, did a tour, Steve, didn't we, of the central area where we go. And I, but I, I'm not sure why it's become quite a priority now. I'll also say that, you know, this is, as a reminder, Charlotte's presentation tonight is informational, but the board will, after we select a hearing date for the budget, that's when we vote on the budget. And correct me if I'm wrong, Charlotte, but although we're budgeting for items, we still have to approve the contracts for them later on. So if we decided to shift priorities, we can still do them.
Absolutely. And that's the thing about this budget. It's based on facts and circumstances and priorities known today, which, given this climate, can change dramatically given any new mandate we might receive from the state of Illinois. Should that occur, we have the opportunity then in the spring to amend this budget to what those current facts and circumstances might be at that timeframe.
Thank you.
So with that, and if anyone has any further questions for Charlotte, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is an action item to set the hearing date for the FY22 budget. And the proposed hearing date is September 27 at 6:30 PM. That date and time also coincides with the, coming that later with the proposed date for the September board. Does anybody have any questions about or comments about the date for the budget? Hearing none, then can I get a motion to approve the date for the budget hearing and approval of the budget September 27?
Sir.
Straley. Yes. Bryant.
Yes.
Saunders. Holmroth. Yes. Rediger. Fitz.
Yes.
Barrett.
Yes. All right, next up, we have section six, communications, section 6.1. It's a citizen's opportunity to address the school board concerning any agenda topic, any agenda topic. And I just want to briefly read a portion of the board policy on public comments and meetings. So when it's, return to make a comment, please step up to the podium. And after, identify yourself. And we're going to, per the policy, we're going to limit each set of comments to five minutes so that everyone gets a chance to speak. And then per the board policy, please remember to conduct oneself with respect and civility toward others and otherwise abide by board policy. So with that preface, if there's anyone who would like to address the board as to any agenda topic, please step up to the podium. And incidentally, we've got a timer. I don't know if anyone can see it, but we do have a timer on by the screen. Good evening. If you could just tell us your name and
First off, I wanted to say thank you for providing me with the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jujia Ravich, and I'm a senior here at Grand Ole School. Today I will be speaking about the mask regulation and what needs to change. I know you're probably not too interested in my opinions, but my opinions should matter and they deserve to be heard. I'm a student in your school, and I'm not just speaking for myself. I'm speaking for kids who are too scared to voice their opinions. They're too scared to speak how they feel because they fear the harassment they'll get from teachers and all the bullying they'll get from students at from teachers and all the bullying they'll get from students at school. So today I'm here to be their voice. As students, we're told to wear a mask all day and every day, with the exception of lunch. I can sit down at the table in the cafeteria with five of my friends and take my mask off to eat lunch. So my question is to you, why can't we take our masks off in the classroom when we're seated at our desks? I'm offering a compromise here. We'll wear our masks when we arrive in the building and when we're in the halls, but when we get to the classroom, we can take off our masks. For those who don't feel comfortable to take their masks off, they are more than welcome to keep them off. Are we really trying to keep our students safe or is this about control? Outside of school, including my gym I want to, I am told wearing a mask is optional. However, when I come to school, I'm forced to put a muzzle on my face for seven hours. What is so different about school that I have to wear my mask here, but practically nowhere else? If this is truly about my safety, wouldn't there be a mandate for every building a school age person to walk into? About one week before school started, JB Pritzker took away the school board's decision of optional mask wearing. As a school board and a community, we obviously felt safe enough to unmask our children at school, otherwise the school board would have never announced unmasking of our children to the public. What is even the point of having a school board if you don't get to make a decision? As a board, you're supposed to represent our community and right now, to some community members, you appear weak and are allowing the governor to take away the power that you actually have. How much longer are you going to let the governor make decisions for you and when are you going to take a stand? You were elected to represent the thoughtful child and community. As a student who sits through all seven hours of school, I can tell you wearing a mask all day is a fun. Sometimes I can barely understand what my teachers and peers around me are saying, so I miss important information. It is also hard to recognize social cues and facial expressions from my peers and teachers. Did I mention it was hard to read? As a student who battles allergies every day, it is a pain. Having to deal with allergies while trying to learn stuff at school sucks. When you add having to wear a mask on top of that, it makes learning for me so much harder. I am not here to quote facts to you, but I do want to tell you the struggles and what it's like to be a high school student right now. I encourage you to process all the things I've shared with you, even if you disagree with me. Please consider my compromise and help the students get a better education. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I am Addison Campbell and I am a junior at Geronimo High. The governor and ISB do not have the authority to mandate masks, take decision-making powers away from the local school boards, or punish schools for not complying with their unlawful mask mandate. There are currently 53 schools on probation and it is very clear that ISB is scrambling because they know they don't have the power to follow through with their threats. Now is the time to act. We need to join forces with the other schools in Illinois that have taken a stand and held firm on their mask optional policy. As the saying goes, power in numbers. Why would the joint commission on administrative rules be asking ISB to explain what authority they have to suspend recognition status? And better yet, why would ISB be refusing to answer? Because no, they don't have the power. Why would the House Bill 2789 be brought before legislation and the governor and IDPH and ISB already have those powers? And House Bill 2789 is still stuck in Senate because it did not pass? So again, all they have is empty threats and now it is time for us to go back to mask optional and join forces with the other schools that are doing what is right for the kids. Masks and social distancing, they are all about control and nothing else. The data does not support their effectiveness whatsoever. In fact, it is quite the opposite. Masks are doing more harm to me than good. Over 95% of the virus spread is coming from aerosol particles, not droplets. Aerosol particles can remain in the air for days and they most certainly travel much farther than six feet. The COVID virus particles are 0.1 microns and less in size and the pore size in surgical masks are 200 to 1,000 times that size. This means that they can go right through any mask than an appropriately sealed N95 mask, making any mask anyone in this room or in this school is wearing completely useless. On the other hand, between touching our masks and breathing in them and making them saturated and moister, we are just trapping harmful bacteria in the masks and causing more sicknesses. These masks are also cause, also cause us to inhale over six times the safe level of carbon dioxide. Also by wearing masks, we are weakening our immune systems, which ultimately makes us more likely to get sick. And if all of that isn't bad enough, the mental damage it is causing is unbelievable. Making kids think that their areas aren't safe, that everyone around them is sick and unsafe to be around, and making them think to themselves that they are dangerous to be around. Making them, the bullying and harassment from adults, administrators and their peers, which both of us standing here have experienced firsthand on a daily basis, is absolutely awful. We have rights. Stop taking them away from us. Day after day, more of our freedom is being taken away from us. Don't be a part of that. Thank you.
I'm 17 years old and I'm a student at Geronimo High School. Myself and my family have trusted the elected leadership of this school district with my education for over 12 years. That trust we granted you is wayward. Currently, we are made to wear masks in classrooms and hallways. We are made to do this for a virus that carries less than 1% mortality rate for students K through 12. Why are we doing this? To help stop the spread? If the masks worked last year, then why the upcoming vaccine mandates? If the vaccines work, then why the masks? Do any of you know the long-term effects of having children of the district taught through masks? I have a four-year-old niece who had speech impediment due to a hearing disability. She is already behind her classmates in basic academic skill sets. I'm sure there are 10, 20, 50 more students like her in our district. Have any of you researched or even considered the effects of having our young generation and their teachers masked? The kindergartners, the first and second graders, who are just learning to truly learn pronunciation and form strong communication skills, have little to no chance when they can't see their teachers' mouth move and facial expressions. And why, why can you sit there solely, responsible for the well-being and education of me, my classmates, and lead so carelessly? Let not only my niece, but so many others suffer for your careless, factless edicts. Her education is your responsibility and your failing. Stay with me, I'll be brief. Evasion moratoriums are stealing assets from hardworking American citizens with zero substance or rationale. Gun control laws are slowly stripping away not Americans' right to hunt, but Americans' right to protect their freedom and liberty, and yet the laws slowly persist inch by inch. Cancel culture is pulling out the very threads that hold this country together, yet elected officials like yourselves and positions like yours cower and go along with the initiative regardless of the expense. Critical race theory is attempting to teach me and my group of friends to look at each other differently than we ever have, growing up, again, worthless and factless agenda. These are all examples of government from federal, state, and local, pushing laws and edicts that have no benefit for us, the people. Now each of you have an opportunity to be brave, use science, and not cower to your governor and teachers unions. Will you follow or will you leave our district as you each were elected to do so? It's been said 100 times and no one seems to listen. To give up a little bit of freedom for a little bit of security, you will end up with neither. Thank you.
My name is Jeanique Morris and I come before you acknowledging and thanking you for agreeing to have students wear masks. We need to take into consideration not just students, but also students as well as staff who may have deficiencies, immunodeficiencies. We do not know how many students, staff are vaccinated. We do not know how many they actually have the virus. We do not know any of these things due to some HIPAA laws. So having masks is the safe way for us to keep our students as well as our staff safe. You have to understand, yes, there is science. Follow the science. Thousands are dying across this nation. Is it going to take our children to start dying for us to take this real and serious? I hope not. So please, I understand and I applaud you students for standing up for your rights and your freedom of speech, but we also have students that do believe masks should be worn because they do feel safe coming to school. Otherwise, let's all just go back to remote. Thank you.
My name is Mary Charlton Swears. I've been here before. Hopefully this is the last. Because George is just about to graduate. I'm here because of him and I know that busing is hard this year. I know that finding employees in that pay scale is very hard, but that does not excuse what has happened so far this school year with the bus situation. I do thank you for the communication you have put out there, but it has not been enough. My suggestion is a remedy for that. Knowing that you have access to GPS for the buses, allow that to parents through Skyward or another private login service. Multiple districts across the country already offer this service. Our district has this opportunity to start this program here and allow parents an idea of where they can tie their child's bus. Not every kid has a cellphone. Not every kid knows how to use a cellphone. Not every kid like my son, who is profoundly disabled and would not be able to protect himself or help himself, who is totally at the mercy of the busing situation. He can't communicate and tell me, Mom, I've been on the bus for an hour and 30 minutes. That was his bus ride to day. No way. Multiple students with other health and behavioral disorders that get agitated or inflamed because of busing. George's best friend can no longer ride the bus from school because we don't know when it's going to pick up and students are standing outside in the heat. It's not wonderful cool outside, people, come on. And these babies are standing outside in the heat waiting for these buses. There are small fixes we can make and there are larger fixes we can make, such as allowing the GPS. Also, the district has the right and opportunity through the Illinois School Code to contract employees, not just hire in-house, but to contract and professional driving companies to also reimburse guardians for transportation if it comes to it. Other districts have already implemented reimbursing parents and guardians, it says guardians of the law and then state policies, to provide that transportation that assures safety and accuracy in progress. All right? Also, I would like to suggest that if it does not already exist, and I'm trying to define it, please correct me if I'm wrong, a policy that limits the amount of time students can ride in transit for pickup and drop off to school be implemented by this board. The state does not mandate a time, but school, individual school boards are allowed to create that. I would love to volunteer for the committee that does the empirical review, record, provides peer-reviewed articles. So we get scientific data to what is a healthy and safe amount of time for students to be on a bus. Again, my side has profound special needs and it makes it extremely difficult for him to function in situations while on the bus and coming off the bus when he has been made to be contained and confined for that long on a non-air condition, in a non-air conditioned vehicle, when you're looking at heat indexes in the high 90s, low hundreds. That's not acceptable. So please, consider these options. Allow parents to know where their buses are so they can better prepare and better prepare for the student. My son had a meltdown the first day of school. His bus never shut. Didn't have to worry how long he was on it because he was never able to get on it. And that was not communicated to me in any way, shape, or form, or to any other parents that went through that same situation. Again, allow us access to the GPS, create the pay proposals, and look into the private contracting. Also, please, discuss implementing research for a board policy that would dictate the amount of time students can safely be on a bus in transit in one direction. Thank you very much for your time and I really do believe we can get a handle on this. I know it's a rough start to the year. Hang in there. I'm trying to hang in there, but please consider these options to help create solutions instead of add to the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to say that in relation to personnel. Please, at this time, please link your comments to an agenda item.
My name is Jonas Amal. I have graduated 2008 from this school and I have a child who just started here. First, I want to address the earlier comment about after snow days. I want to state that while it's a great idea, I do take issue with the grade six to 12 having to turn in their homework the day they return. It sets up for, I believe it sets up for bad learning environment. It means that kids are going to be focused on completing their homework that's due by the end of the day rather than take attention to the lessons that are being taught on that day. It would probably be more beneficial to consider making it a two-day deadline. Outside of that, I do want to address some of the comments that were made earlier. And while I do applaud the commitment and the courage to come up here and speak, I do think that perhaps the issue isn't being fully assessed from all sides. Best way to put this, I think, is that, one, the comment of only 1% of, there's only 1% mortality rate for children. Okay, 1%, doesn't sound like a lot. In a school that's full of 2,000 kids, that's 20 kids. That's 20 brothers, sisters, children, grandchildren that you just lose. That's what, two per grade? That's going to impact everyone. The bigger issue to me is the lack of understanding, and it is a profound lack of understanding, that this isn't about us. It's not about me how you wear a mask. I hate you. I cannot stand you. I feel completely restrained. But I also understand that this is about what I bring home to my family, what I bring to my grandchildren, oh, sorry, my grandparents, what I bring to other children who come to my house, what I bring to my friends' families. It's not about me getting sick, protecting me from getting sick. It's not about students protecting themselves. It's about taking even the most minimum viable step to ensure that someone else's illness isn't on our hands. No one needs that on their conscience. If one of these children does go home, tests positive for coronavirus, their branch, their grandparent becomes sick, their grandparent dies, are they going to feel guilty? Probably. Is this going to live with them for the rest of their lives? Probably. Is that going to be damaging? Probably more so than having to wear a mask. Again, not an abnormal situation, but this is about a civic responsibility. And I think that civic responsibility has been lost in confidence. We have gotten so caught up in a political argument about state control, local control, Republicans, Democrats, all of us. This is about us taking care of our friends, our families, our neighbors, people in this community. We have to take control and we have to understand that each of us has a responsibility to each other of us to keep us healthy, to keep us strong, and to keep us together. And to me, a 1% mortality rate, yeah, sounds small. I'm sorry? That's the 1% fine. The 20 children, if they have 10 children, 15 children, that helps us. This is not acceptable. Would you like to, please come up with what I have done, otherwise it ceases. I do not want this to be a political debate. I do not want this to be a debate of him versus her, her versus him, any of that. I want this to be about safety. I want our child to come to school and be safe, come home and be safe, go places and be safe. When we can get back to a state where we can all be safe together, that would be fantastic. Until then, it's just about doing what is right for everyone versus what is inconveniencing to us as individuals. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matt Mar. I was not going to speak tonight. I was just coming to support others. However, I do have to address that point that gentleman just said. The fact that he said that there would be 20 deaths in this district, there have been just over 20 deaths and a 0.7 percentage for the entire state over 18 months. That is hyper, that's a hyperbolic statement. To say that there would be 20 students killed via coronavirus. No one wants anyone to get sick. No one. I don't want, I don't care what their views are on masks. I don't want anyone to get sick. However, I have a second grader in the district and I have a three-year-old who will run to this in two years. Children learn via facial views, via facial expressions. My child is having to learn to read through a mask. It's not easy. Okay? I had no problem with the mask mandates last year. We were in a different era. In a post-vaccine world, every adult has had the opportunity to get the vaccine. There's no limiting principle if we say that we have to continue to wear masks in perpetuity to affect someone who has other immune issues. That's unfortunate, but does that mean we just mask in perpetuity and this is life now for our children? Because I don't want that. And I know many others don't. There are many others who are scared to speak on this subject. I didn't want to speak on it myself. So I just wanted to address, I do not think there will be 20 kids dead in the district if we remove masks. Thank you.
Please, please, this is a public comment period. If you want to be able to speak, start the debate.
How you all doing? My name is Mary Morris. I too do not want to speak myself, actually, but after hearing all this and working in the clinic myself, I can honestly say that I don't understand why we would not want to wear a mask. I do understand, I'm not a doctor, let me just be clear, but I've seen enough patients enough to know that not wearing a mask is more deadly than it could have one more. Yes, masks may not be more harmful protective, but you have a better chance of wearing a mask and having to be safe than not wearing one at all. What I don't understand is, as far as us being parents are concerned, why we would not want to wear a mask. What I'm getting at is that if we complain about children not... What I'm, what I'm getting at is that if we complain about children not having, if one of them have their mask on, but what is it, what will happen if it is your child? My wife made it quite clear. What is it going to take for us to understand that this, at this current moment, that this is important? And I think, it seems like the only way that would happen if it's one of our children, one of those, your children. If they got, is that what it's going to take to say, well, maybe this is the need. We don't like an odd person who might not wear a mask. What I do understand is mandatory. I had a patient come in today who unfortunately did have COVID. And then we had to ship, unfortunately ship them off because we did not want it to happen to infect it, to infect everyone else. It is unfortunate that we could not wear this mask and unfortunately have to do this necessarily. And I think one of the also problems is that we don't have a total understanding whether you are for the mask or without a mask, whether you're for the vaccine, without the vaccine. We don't have total understanding of what all it takes. So I think, uh, at the school board, I think you are going right there. Um, I think we need to have some understanding as far as, uh, the liability is necessary and hopefully we can resolve and it's very sensible, Mary. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't hear. Can you hear back there okay? My name is Jerry Kinnos. I've been here before, talked about masks, talked about CRT, which you've never got back to me as promised. I want to first thank these four students for having the courage to get up and tell you what they think about masks. It's not just them, it's parents and grandparents like me that do not approve of these masks. And you know what else? I'd like to raise a hand of everybody that washes the mask every night or puts a clean mask every morning on their child.
One, two, three, four.
Eight, nine, 11. Okay, do you realize that those masks carry bacteria? And just because you're wearing one, doesn't mean it's going to work. You're just getting more bacteria in your lungs from wearing a dirty mask. Another thing, can you show me any proof that any mask works? Whether it's a neoprene, a cloth mask, a mask like a boot mask, that a lot of them are made in China and have on the box can cause cancer? What is up? I think it's time that our school shows some strength, our school board shows some strength, and join the other schools that are unmasking their children. Strength in numbers, as one of the students said, will make a big difference. Our governor can't mandate this. A mandate is not a law. It's time for us to take the mask off our kids. They're hot, they're sweaty, you've got everybody from kid, no, I'm sorry. I have a grandson that is going to be two in a week. I have a granddaughter that's three and a half. They have to wear a mask a day here. It's from the bottom up and it's coming at us from the top down. It's time we get strength and get rid of the mask and start thinking of our students. This meeting has been somewhat of a sham because I can't hear, people around me can't hear when the volume is too low. The last gentleman that was up here don't have a clue what he just said. The mask, I can't understand what anybody is saying with the mask on. How do you expect our kids to hear? How do you expect our kids to know what is being said? It's time you're wearing the mask, folks. Show some strength.
Hello, my name is Chris Chambers. Can everyone hear me? I have a daughter that's a senior this year, kind of something graduated two years ago. I just want to say I've been involved in developing a saliva COVID test with Shield Illinois. I've done quite a bit of reading on measures that are actively effective at preventing the spread of COVID. There are a number of studies that show within school buildings specifically, as well as other business buildings, office buildings, there are four factors that are very critical. Their air handling, their exchange, which I'm not sure what was going on in the school with that. The other three are vaccination, masking, and social distancing. So there are at least two of the things that are in our control immediately, and that is masking and social distancing. And I want to applaud the school board for supporting the mask mandate and having children in the school district be masked to protect the health of themselves, the staff, and the community. Those four factors are very important. We can't control who gets vaccinated at this point. I would encourage everyone to be vaccinated because even though you may still contract COVID, you're going to have a less severe disease course, you're going to be less likely to transmit it to other people. And yes, the students are correct that we have personal freedoms, but we also have civic responsibility. And our civic responsibility is to care not only for ourselves, but for those around us. And I feel very strongly that we all have a role to play in protecting our fellow citizens. Uh, the other point I want to make is that my wife is a physician. She wears a mask every day to protect herself and her patients. And there is very little, dare I say, no evidence suggesting that physicians that wear masks are sicker, have more bacteria, have more illness than people that don't. So I just feel like the science does not support the idea that wearing a mask makes you sicker. And indeed, you can actually see over the course of this pandemic, there has been a great decrease in the number of typical yearly infections that are found, such as flu, colds, ear infections, and the like. So the masks actually prevent other infections, not just COVID. So I want to continue to encourage the school board to make the right decision in protecting the students, staff, and community. Thank you.
My name is John Fremell and I have a first and third grader at Ball of Elementary. We moved here at the beginning of the year and partly to the reputation of Ball Chatham for academic excellence. Our kids were excited to go back to school in person for the first time since March of 2020. We were all excited to be part of a district that we believed would follow science and care enough about our children to keep them safe. We have a tremendous amount of peer-reviewed scientific data that shows vaccines work and masks work. We also know that Delta has changed the game. The SJR reported that two of the three most recent COVID deaths here in our community were people in their 30s. And we can no longer say that kids aren't getting sick. We know this because the pediatric hospitalizations are rising right now, even as hospitals all around us run out of ICU beds. The American Academy of Pediatrics is reporting 180,000 new pediatric COVID cases in the past week, the worst since last winter. This is an exponential increase of four times the amount just two weeks ago. Every state in the U.S. and every county in Illinois except one is experiencing high transmission levels, according to the CDC. For our kids under 12 who can't get vaccinated, who don't have remote learning available to them anymore, whose parents can no longer stay at home due to work, the only thing keeping them safe is a piece of cloth over their face. And we know from many, many peer-reviewed scientific studies that those pieces of cloth are safe and are extremely effective at preventing transmission of the coronavirus somewhere in the range of 70 to 95% in most of the studies I've read. It's a single piece of cloth, but judging by the reactions of some in the community and some on this board, you'd think we're asking the kids to engage in some horrible act of self-harm or I don't even know what. And I have to say, shame on you. And Mr. Phillips and Mr. Bryant have the audacity to post all over social media that putting masks on children is child abuse. Shame on them. Mr. Phillips and Mr. Bryant, let me tell you about child abuse. We adopted our two children from foster care after being in the system for over two years. And when DCFS found our children, they were covered in bruises, they were dirty, and they couldn't even remember the last time they ate. They've been safe now for over four years, but we're still dealing with the abuse they had to endure. They've been diagnosed with PTSD. They are six and eight years old. Our doctor wants to put one of them on antidepressants. So Mr. Phillips and Mr. Bryant, when you say that my attempts to keep my children healthy, to keep my children alive are child abuse, you have no idea what child abuse even is. You are minimizing, mocking my children's pain and trauma. Your job as a school board member is to act in my children's best interest. Instead, you're acting with your own political interests. And you obviously have no regard for how your words are affecting my children and my family. I understand the arguments about personal liberty, my body, my choice. But your rights end where public health and personal safety begin. You don't have a right to breathe cigarette smoke in my face anymore because that impacts my health. That's why you can't smoke inside. And it's the same thing with masks. You don't have a right to transmit a deadly virus to me during a global pandemic. That's why we need to wear masks indoors. It's the same thing. There are people in the community and on the board who cling to the word recommend. They say masks are only a recommendation. But when you say you want to reject this recommendation, what you're saying is that you want to reject hundreds of peer studies that show the efficacy of masks. What you say is that you don't want to listen to public health officials, to doctors, and to scientists who have studied epidemiology their entire lives. What you say is that you don't care about public health guidance from the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, from IDPH, from the State Board of Education. What you say is you'd rather prove some political point by playing around with my children's health. But what I'm saying is you don't have that right. And as the grownups in this room, we should be better than this. We must be better than this. So please, follow the science, continue to follow the recommendations. Please keep my kids safe and please keep yourselves safe. Thank you.
Good evening. Could you hear me? My name is Dr. Sarah Fowler and I would just like to reiterate my husband, Chris Chambers, and then most recent gentleman. To add to that, the last year and a half has been frustrating for everybody. We have our own senior. She spent last year doing school at home. It's frustrating and it's hard. And I think our mission should be to try to keep everyone in school and in person as much as possible. And until we can get all the children vaccinated, which we don't have approval for yet, it's just not fair to make it optional. And I think with our main objective to try to stay in school and stay in person, I would 100% support your decision. It is definitely following the science. And I do think there can be an endpoint, but not until everybody has the opportunity to be vaccinated. Thank you.
In terms of the health status of masks as a surgeon, I've been wearing one for 20 years every day at work, as well as all of my colleagues that work in the operating room. And so if there is any kind of risk to doing that, I think we would have a lot of data to show that there's damage and harm of wearing a mask all day, every day. We change our underwear every day, we can change our mask every day, and there is not any science behind the unhealth of masks.
Is there anyone else who has a comment about agenda?
Well, hi, my name is Erin Campbell. And as much as I would love to add to this lovely mask debate, I will refrain because you've heard enough. So, um, what I'm actually here for is a request to have homeschooled high school children be allowed to participate in sports. Our district right now allows intermediate, intermediate students, intermediate school students, and middle school students to participate in sports if they're homeschooled. But our high school does not. And that's just a school choice. It's up to the school. You guys can make this choice. IHSA doesn't have any rules about it. They say it is up to individual school. Um, the only reason that I was given by our ED as to why that is the case here is because they said that they were concerned, there's concern that high school students wouldn't be able, that are homeschooled wouldn't be meeting the IHSA eligibility criteria. So I think that's a simple fix. I think you just, you know, make sure that you are clear about what the IHSA eligibility criteria is and make sure that, and make, make aware, make people aware that as long as their child is meeting those requirements in their homeschool program, they should be allowed to participate in sports, especially in this crazy circumstance of a world we're living in right now. My kids want to be homeschooled. They don't want to go to school in a mess. They don't want to go to school in all this crap. But they want to participate in their sports. They have a senior and a junior, they've done it their whole lives, they want to still be able to do it and, 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 you know, be on their school team. So I'm asking that you guys change that rule and that it be implemented in the return to larger plan that high schoolers that are homeschooled can participate in sports as long as they meet the eligibility criteria. That's it.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Bryant and I have a freshman in high school. And I'm here to address a little bit about masks. And I'm not a doctor, I'm not a physician. I just, I would like to have the choice to choose what is best for my child. And I think that there are others out there that feel the same way. I understand that there's data on both sides and that can be argued till you blue in the face. I've heard people saying that if you're not for masks, that you don't care about others. That could not be further from the truth. I wear my mask, I got vaccinated, I did what I needed to do for myself and for others. But there's a portion of people out there, and I'm talking about kids, that some of the people have touched on, that are experiencing mental illness and learning disabilities because they are masked up. I have a friend of mine who had to get a counselor so her son would go back to school. He was petrified of going back to school. So you think about last year, you think about the isolation of kids being home. And now we're back in school. So if I want to wear a mask to protect myself and my family, that's my right. But if I want not to wear a mask for my child because of her emotional and psychological well-being, that should be my right. But I don't get a right because of this mandate that has been put out there. So all I ask is that you consider and give parents a right. That wearing a mask can protect those that are concerned about it. If the mask worked and, and then it can't be spread, or you wear a mask, you won't get it. But I, there's a side of this that science isn't looking at right now. There's no studies being done because all the focus is on the virus, is the vaccine safe? All of those things. And I think that after this gets through, and if this continues to go on, because there's another variant after this called Lambda. variant after this called Lambda, so when does it end? I want a choice. And the person, the gentleman that said something about Mr. Bryant not knowing anything about physical abuse, you have no idea what you're talking about, sir. This gentleman has worked for 20 years protecting our kids from sexually violent predators, and you do not even want to know the crap that's been done with these kids and the things that have been done by adults to these kids. You want to talk about child abuse? I feel for you. I'm glad you took those kids in. Oh, don't you dare say my husband knows nothing about it.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment about an agenda item?
I can, but I'll save mine for the end.
Okay, thanks. All right, well, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is now 6.1.1. This was the former item numbered 4.1, and it's the proposal to permit e-learning in lieu of emergency days. We could return to that, I think you did. So is there any further discussion about this agenda item now that we've had most common opportunity received?
Mr. President, I just want to say that from day one since I've been consistent in prioritizing in class instruction, and so I would give a vote on this. I understand that sometimes the makeup days at the end of the year are probably not as productive as we would hope in terms of kids being ready for summer break and that, but if we cancel school because of weather in the winter, we should be able to adjust that timing of the instruction so those days in the later parts of the calendar are more effective. So I just wanted to make that point and explain why I'm going to give a vote on this.
Thank you. Doug, I have a question for you. If the board votes to authorize the e-learning in lieu of the emergency days, is the district required to elect to go with e-learning on a particular day, or could the district still choose to have a snow day, for example?
Well, at this point, I mean, it's a matter of adopting the inclusion to the board so that we can prepare, and it has to do with our calendar as well. So the calendar is submitted to the RBA for approval as well. So it's a matter of, I guess you can do anything at the end of the year, but this resolution here is to be adopted so that we can have the opportunity to have a learning day as opposed to being on the end of the year. We need to vote on it now because we're not going to change our calendar because people are going to make plans. And if we were to say later that, well, by the way, we're not going to have, we're going to make this snow day, and we're going to tag it on the end of the year, would be, I think, unfair.
But this vote would simply give the district the condescending correct with discretion to choose whether to go with e-learning or a snow day in a particular emergency.
Right, or say, or adjusting so that it is going to be an e-learning day.
So it would be required to have an e-learning day?
So I guess I have just a follow-up to that. I don't have an issue with authorizing the use of e-learning in lieu of snow days to a degree, but I hear what Pat's saying in terms of in-person learning typically, and we can find lots of research on it over the last year, is more effective than the remote learning in the K through 12 setting. So I would hate to be in a situation where there was some sort of, oh, I don't know, we had a really bad winter and we're talking 10 snow days that we, or 12, and we're learning for all of those.
And you know what? I agree with Laura on that because I think that's a different scenario altogether. I think that's something that, just like what we have had here is where there have been a number of emergency days, the state stepped in and worked with school districts on that. But I don't, you know, we have an experience, we have experienced it once probably in the last 70 years, but for the most part, we don't see that occur.
Yeah, I understand it doesn't happen often. I guess for me, I'd be supportive of the flexibility to provide e-learning on an emergency or snow day type scenario. I just would also like that flexibility to say, whoa, that's too many e-learning days, and maybe we ought to relook at the calendar.
I think it's fair. I mean, I do. I, you know, if we were in the middle of an emergency learning, shut down for an entire week, that would probably be a different discussion.
We have experience providing remote learning that's a little bit more robust than just asynchronous.
Correct.
Would there be an opportunity to sort of ramp up the quality of our e-learning, both with respect to these days and potentially with respect to the return to learn, depending on how things go?
We look at that all the time. I mean, we work with our principals, work with our teachers, on ways we can continue to create that opportunity. So yes.
Because we learn a lot, like last year, you know? I would hate to throw away that.
And there are things you need to change, just like in regular instructional classroom. You know, if you're not doing something well, you get rid of that. If you're doing something else, or you learn better strategies, then you implement those.
This is a little bit more tricky, I think, though, because it's a last-minute thing. So the ability to really prepare is like the night before. Right? So it's a little bit more tricky in that regard in terms of thinking about quality because...
I'm not an educator.
Well, I was thinking in terms of like, you're talking about the night before, it's also predicated on students having everything in the material that they need at home, which is why I was thinking about the gentleman's suggestion, had a little bit more time to turn it in just in case. And I don't know, maybe everything is much more clear as approval for them as well? Like, there's just, you know, things that I would really know?
Yeah, but I think kind of a dovetail on both of those is that it is not a last-minute. We don't know if the storm on the snow day is going to hit or not. And when it does, it hits us, you know? And that's why our teachers, you know, they're professional educators. Trust me, they have plans ready. And, you know, the experience we've had with the remote options have better preparedness for those types of days. So to your point, it is all of a sudden, but it's not just a last-minute thing. They have plans that are prepared.
And if I could, from more of a pedagogical perspective, when you are a teacher and you're going, you're on a schedule, you're on a schedule in terms of what you're teaching, it's better to keep going if you can on that schedule and keep the process of learning going on that schedule. And we all know that those days that are tacked on at the end for snow days, that's at the end of the semester in which things are unfortunately not usually learned at the greatest degree. And I do agree, in-person learning is the best, but I think that's something that we also have to consider.
And I think for the record, it should be stated as well that the teachers are in favor of this as well, because there was questions, or maybe you all didn't have, I did have this question, so the teachers are in favor of having these days sort of these days. But I think that's also important to have. And Jennifer, I think you have a bit of something, so.
I just wanted to provide just a little bit of clarification to the question that you asked.
Please state your name, Jen.
Jennifer Carter. These days can only, we can only use a maximum of five days. So there is no opportunity to extend it past the five emergency days that are already tacked on to the end of the calendar. This is a waiver that does allow you flexibility. It's a waiver for three years, and it just isn't placed when the district decides to implement e-learning. Our teachers, our administrators are in strong support of this to continue the continuity of learning as Australia's shared, and that is why we're before you tonight. But I just wanted to provide clarity that there's a maximum of five days this can be used.
There are five, yeah, quite well said, in five days, but no, in the cases where you, you know, we're not, I've got a situation where we've had those eight to 10 days that have been used, and so sometimes the state requires the flexibility of changing, but you are absolutely right, there's a maximum of five days.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this agenda?
I do. I got one question. Where, if they're going to, the students are going to be able to be instructed based on this, and it says that there's not to be no more than five hours of instruction. How are they going to get the five hours of instruction if the teachers, I mean, if it's a snow day, people aren't coming to work, correct? So the teachers aren't going to teach from the classroom, they're going to be home?
Sometimes.
And the question is going to be, how are students going to receive their work, and why would it be mandated handed the very next day?
So the, for our students in grades seven through 12, their assignments will be posted prior to 9:00 AM the day of the emergency day or the snow day on Canvas. That's where they're to check in. All of their materials are provided digitally via Canvas. We will also have paper copies available at our district office for families that maybe want to pick it up that day because they don't want to come that day because of emergency situations. The paper copies will be available that next day. The reason for the turn it in the next day is that our teachers are very concerned that when we allow more time, they will, students may procrastinate and then build up multiple days of assignments that they're then required to turn in or may skip some assignments. So we want to keep them on track. We want them to use that emergency day to complete their assignments. Each period in grade seven through 12 will assign work to match their periods that equal the five clock hours of instruction, so that varies between 38 minutes and 42 minutes of instruction. And our K-6 families will receive their print materials during parent-teacher conferences because we plan to use the September 6th day to work through all the logistics, communicate what the expectations are, and prepare materials for families so that we can communicate early and then also remind them the day of the snow day what the expectations are.
Because another factor, another thing in relation with the days that you were mentioning was when we have those snow days, they're not, they don't often coincide with the parent system as well. We've had times, well, particularly this day here, here the ice is very seldom to get larger snow. We've had cold days, so a lot of times, best students aren't really transport students. So they do, you know, that's not as many factors.
I have an equity question because, so if students are not even picking up paper copies until the next day, which you just said is allowed, then they're not turning in papers those same days. But the students who did it electronically are still required to turn in their work on the same day. I'm just going to have an equity to that.
All students are expected to turn in by the end of that day.
Even if they pick it up that day?
So it wouldn't be that, it would be 3:15 they would have after school to complete that work once the teacher has gone over it with them and submitted it by that time. We also have tutoring available throughout the days, EM before school on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, so we have teachers available to provide that support. Also on the day, we do have devices for all students in grades five through 12 that they take home. Very successful last year with that, and we were able to identify the families that needed hotspots. We still know who may need some support, and we can make that available. I'm not sure if I'm answering all of your questions, but we've also addressed our students with special needs. They need to be looked at as well as making sure they have access and have the ability to engage. So there are different plans to put in place to make sure that they're continuing to work on their IP goals.
How many days do we use? I know last year was a unique day or unique year. How many days do we generally use of snow days on average?
Did we use two last year or just one?
I think it was for cold weather. I don't think it was for snow.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at what our record's been, and it hasn't been that many lately. It's usually, it's typically one or two. You know, the further south we go, it even increases a little bit because of the ice they experience. We're kind of in a sweet spot a little bit, is my thing. Further north, it's snow accumulation. So we see a little less, but I have had times where we've had eight days.
So I'm in favor of this. I don't understand why we can't give seven through 12 a second day. We give three days for the K through 6. Why can't we give the seven through 12 two days just so that they're back to school and able to access? I know they can email with their teachers when they're out, but that hopefully applies to students who have access to internet in their homes. And I don't think it's realistic to expect, realistic to expect the families that don't to come to the district office, let's say it's a snow day and we're talking half a foot of snow, to come to the district to get a, pick up a hotspot that morning on a snow day. So yeah, I would be in favor of providing an extra day for those assignments to be completed. I understand the need to sit on a schedule and keep students on a schedule, but I think if we're going to expect that all students do this, we've got to give them the ability to access instructional support, and some may not be able to do that on the actual e-learning day.
Yeah, because we're asking them to do the makeup work while doing also the work for that particular day, that they're expected to turn in that day. By just the needs that maybe...
We'll bring that, we'll take that back. We'll take that back, we'll talk with our other learning teams and consider that modification. I think that's what we'll be.
Okay, at this point, unless someone has further questions, we have a recommendation from the administration to adopt the e-learning program in lieu of emergency days. Is there, does someone want to make a motion in connection with that recommendation?
So I will make a motion to adopt the e-learning resolution. It does not, by the way, stipulate that, it doesn't appear to stipulate that one day turnaround time, so just given the fact that Dr. Wood committed to kind of discussing that piece and working through that part of it, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the e-learning resolution for the emergency days.
Is there a second?
A second.
Ashley, could you please take the roll?
Ready, go. Yes. Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Fowler?
Yes.
Fitz?
No.
Connor?
Yes.
Traylor?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is the return to learn plan for the 2021-2022 school year. It's teed up as a discussion item, but it's also teed up in case someone wants, and for notice purposes, as an action item in case someone wants to make motions in connection with it. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board for discussion.
I'll go. May I speak?
Please.
So in the spring, I got a lot of questions about the return to learn plan, and I start this. The plan for the fall comes from the superintendent based on agency guidelines which are driven by community virus transmission metrics. We don't know when the impact of the variants will be this summer, so I'll have to seek the expertise of epidemiologists and the concerns of all stakeholders to make sure that the needs of vulnerable students, families, and staff are addressed. The consequences are too significant to make decisions based on wishes or expediency, and I will de-center my own wants and needs in considering how to do this best. I will focus hard on things we can affect, like community spread, facilities readiness, understanding our recovery needs, and ensuring we have the funds to handle them. Now, it's months later. Mounting priority is in-person learning without adaptive pauses or disruptive quarantines. In-person learning without adaptive pauses or disruptive quarantines. At this time, incentive accounting, universal masking, along with layer of other mitigation techniques. create the conditions to maximize in-person learning, ideally without adaptive pauses or disruptive quarantines. So, I said I would talk to epidemiologists. I've heard from Dr. Sundarishan, Chief of Infectious Diseases at SIA Med, who's also advisor at STD PH, and Dr. Kraft, who's Director of Clinical Virology Research at Emory. Dr. Sundarishan related to me that unvaccinated children should be in masks until at least 60% of our students are vaccinated. Dr. Kraft reiterated that universal masking is imperative right now. I've also spoken with both our family pediatrician and one of the nurse practitioners at STD PH. They indicated that students must remain masked until fully vaccinated. Those conversations took place before we moved into substantial transmission and before the governor's mandate. Now in front of me, I have a folder with dozens of peer-reviewed papers about masks and ventilation. They help me understand the basis for the guidelines. As a general rule, regulatory guidelines are devised by experts to community best practices. They provide the level of caution needed to protect the most vulnerable, which is an orientation I share. The most vulnerable. I have been on Dr. Wood's case all summer about vaccines, testing, and ventilation, because these two are necessary to have a successful school year in person with no adaptive pauses or disruptive quarantines. He has treated me with kindness and grace in spite of my badgering, and I appreciate his willingness to take responsibility for the wellbeing of our students, staff, and families, even though it is very difficult right now. Doing the right thing can be unpopular, and often worse critics are the most local and unkind. But I also know that Dr. Wood tends towards flexibility and choice within the bounds of local guidance. So I am confident that he will not keep our students in masks one minute longer than is needed to keep everyone safe in school. This Return to Learn policy includes universal masking, social distancing, testing, tracing, quarantine provisions, and ventilation improvements. So I support it, and I trust that as we remove layered mitigation, we will do it stepwise. I would like to take this opportunity to remind everybody that we are holding COVID vaccination clinics on October, August 30th and September 20th from 3:30 to 5:30 in the Commons in this building. Anyone who would like a vaccine is welcome to attend. I strongly encourage everyone age 12 and over to take advantage of the free opportunity to get vaccinated with the FDA-approved Pfizer Biotech product. For our vaccine clinic, we're asking you to email inverse Tina Huber at thuber@pcst5.org for more information and an appointment. If those days don't work, I'm sure she can help you find an appointment that will work with your schedule. I will help if you need a ride. If you are unsure if vaccination is right for you or your family, please ask the healthcare provider that you trust. It's okay to have questions and to want more information. The problem that we have is that currently only 38% of 12- to 17-year-olds in San Antonio County are fully vaccinated. We are nowhere close to where we need to be to put this pandemic behind us. Please remember that at this time, fully vaccinated students are exempt from quarantine as long as they remain asymptomatic. Vaccination is how we will keep our kids in school in person with no unnecessary quarantines or adaptive pauses. Now, the other thing I talked about a lot earlier this year is a poor person to do sharing duty to the district. No more needs to be said about that because it goes without saying, but we shouldn't need to wait for a government mandate to do what we need to do to take care of our district. I have heard the arguments that many of you have made against the mandate, and I attended the TRO, Temporary Objection Hearing, in the Ute County case this morning, so I've heard all the arguments. I'm aware of Senator Rose's desire for board to join a class action lawsuit against the governor. I have no desire for our board to participate in that or anything similar. Going forward, I'd like to get back to our work with respect to board goals, student success, and a culture of belonging, and to being a board that respects the apple and takes responsibility for itself in terms of how we act in this space and in other spaces as well. Thank you, as always, for the opportunity to serve on this board and to address this board.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I want to welcome everyone. I'm glad to see everyone here, teachers, administrators, staff, students, concerned parents on both sides. It's great that you're here for your students of our district. As parents, you should be taking an active role in their education, their health, their mental and physical safety. While I can't agree with everything that everybody says, we all have the right to our opinions. We have several issues here today that need to be addressed fairly immediately. The mask mandates, the quarantine of healthy students or staff, the transportation issues that are still ongoing, and the online learning. I've asked a few times to have a special meeting to address these issues prior to the start of school year, but as we all know, we're here tonight. First of all, let me say I'm sorry for the way things have gone with the transportation and the way the children and the young adults have had to endure the long bus lines, the long lines for pickup. Hopefully that can be addressed and be fixed. I know it's still an issue because the road was blocked all the way to Iron Bridge just yesterday, coming into the high school. I've heard from both sides, and I can't agree, I agree with some of what everybody says. But first of all, let's talk about where we are, or where we've been. As of June 11th, our governor moved Illinois into Phase 5 of his recovery plan for our state. With that, everything was open. Adults and children went about their lives. We moved out of the pandemic to some degree. We flattened the curve, we got vaccines for the ones that wanted it, we lowered the supposed cases of COVID. Kids played sports all summer, everywhere, in other states, in our state, in our local communities, and everywhere. Families were on vacation, they had gatherings, weathering took place. People were trying to get around as normal. Now we are with the Delta variant. Now all of a sudden, it's affecting children worse than ever, and it's picking on the unvaccinated and vaccinated people. Yet this disease still has a 99.8% recovery rate. The government is on the brink of forced vaccinations with no end in sight. The governor placed this mandate, but did not give us an end date. While it was my choice to get vaccinated, it should be my choice as a parent on what is placed in my child's body. I've heard all about the smallpox, chickenpox, polio, and all the other vaccines. I'm not here to argue whether or not I agree or disagree with the vaccine effectiveness or anything else. What I wanna do is discuss a person's right to choice. We have that right regardless of the politicians' mandates. We follow laws to the best of our abilities, for the most part, we follow rules. But some rules are in place that cannot or should not be followed, or at least questioned. I'm not saying not to follow the rules, but there are reasons a person would want to question. Some rules are enforced by fear and intimidation. If that's the case, what stops them from forcing other mandates? CDC came out with guidance and recommendations, key words, guidance and recommendations. Districts were allowed to take control of their own responsibilities, which were never relinquished in the first place, on July 9th. Many districts voted to have masking as optional, as they are allowed since they are governing bodies of that district. Once the governor saw that districts were going against his recommendations, he decided that he would do an executive order that mandates all staff and children and visitors to wear mouth face coverages all day regardless of health reasons, religious reasons, and took away parental choice. I believe in parental choice. If someone's going to tell me how to raise my child or what's best for them, I suggest they open their checkbook, start paying for things, and helping me raise my child in every way, shape, and form. It's not a politician's call, it's not your call, it's my call. This is a parent's right to do what's best for their child. I'm not a doctor, I don't claim to be one, I don't know everything. But nobody, nobody does. Everybody's learning something new about this pandemic every day. If somebody says they know everything, they're lying. Even if I was a doctor, and I was hired, unless I was hired by the parent, everything I say is an opinion. So here we are, forced with this masking on our children, quarantining healthy individuals. To me, this is unacceptable, and is child abuse, mental abuse, not only for the child, but for the parents as well. We're here with the bullies of ISB and ISHA, forcing their agenda on districts by threats and intimidation, except for a few brave districts most have bowed to the dictatorship of our governor and have placed our children and staff in masks. Now the ISB and ISHA have followed suit with this mandate. No one can tell us how long this is gonna last, and now they may even impose more stricter restrictions to mitigate the resurgence of COVID, when the data clearly shows the numbers have gone down. Districts are caving to enforce mandates and taking away local control. I'm not sure, but I don't believe that's democracy. Let me reiterate that I've researched not only the legal and ethical authority of the governing bodies, but the legislature is the only one that has the ability to pass laws. However, our governor and many others have used this pandemic as a way to take control. I firmly believe the governor has overstepped his legal authority based on 20 ILCS 3305/7. Section 7 clearly states the executive orders are for 30 days, and a proclamation of a disaster must exist. I think that after 19 months of lockdowns, quarantines, and mask mandates, this does not constitute an emergency disaster. Lack of leadership in every unit of government is the disaster. To me, this is unacceptable. What we need is clear leadership and showing that people are done with the fear and frustration that this man-made pandemic has caused. I hope someday that the truth comes out, but right now, we're stuck with the hampered Delta. I do wanna share that ISB does not have the authority to punish schools and districts for failing to follow guidelines set up by IDPH and the CDC. Yet they have threatened districts that have brave leadership to go against the mandates. They punished school districts and claimed to remove their recognition. And now ISHA has put sports out there that schools do not comply with the mandates, then the student athletes will not be allowed to participate. When are people going to take a stand for their rights as a parent or a citizen? The law's clear on quarantines, and it was backed in Tuesday in Adams County. I'm trying to get the actual court order stated. You cannot quarantine a healthy person without consent or a court order. It's just that simple. I would be more than happy to read the Public Act, but I forgot my glasses, and it's too small. But it clearly states that you cannot quarantine a healthy person without consent or a court order. IDPH can quarantine somebody for 48 hours as they did, but it has to go to court, and a judge has to rule that person has to be quarantined. I would love to take a vote on removing the mask mandates to make it optional, but I believe it's not on the agenda for that. While it may not pass, and I have not discussed it with any of the other board members, I think the public deserves to know where the members' standings to the social media. Next, let's discuss the transportation issue. Received and all clear today that things are getting better, that the pickup line from GHS was all the way to the Iron Bridge almost every day. The parking lot is a zoo. If anybody's been here, it's unbearable. I was almost hit in the parking lot twice. So what are we gonna do to fix it? I'll leave that to the superintendent to address. Students on the bus are being bullied, acting up, being disrespectful to adults and other students. I thought cameras were being installed. Where are they? We've had buses that's disappeared, gone to other cities, bus drivers. The board raised wages, yet we're still short of bus drivers. What's going on with the staffing, and why can't we retain people right now? I'm not quite sure who approved the policy, and the board didn't, for not allowing students to receive any instruction for failing to conform to the mask policy. I'm not sure who set the policy on quarantining students where parents have to pick up their work. How are honor students or special needs students supposed to keep up? Why or not are we not offering some sort of e-learning or some remote learning to those students that are quarantined? As Andrea said before, we learned a lot last year on how to do that. Parents and students deserve an answer, not loud, not now, not later, as school goes on. There's other things I wanna address, but that's the main topics for now. We need to deal with some of these as quickly as possible. Thank you.
I think you said, you said you didn't think that the Return to Learn Plan on the agenda would allow for a motion, but it's, that's why it's teed up, as I said earlier, as a discussion slash action item. So if you'd like to make a motion to modify things on the Return to Learn Plan, certainly Tyler can do that. I would just ask that you let folks, other folks speak before we do that, because I'd like to have a full discussion, give everybody an opportunity.
I have a few things to add. First, I guess what I'd like to say is, I share some of my fellow board members' frustration in the, the lack of our ability to have some local control over this situation. However, this executive order does have the effect of law. That is how executive orders work. Yes, he will have to issue an additional executive order if he plans to extend it beyond the 30-day period that the executive order, he has the ability to enforce that executive order. But unfortunately, at this point, that executive order does have the effect of law. So I believe it is our, we do not, I feel our hands are tied in this situation. So I don't think masks being optional at this point is even something we, as a board, have the ability to impact. There is an opportunity for public comment period, but while it's our opportunity to speak, I would just ask that you listen as we listened when you guys were speaking. I said a lot of things in the spring about the importance of in-person learning. And I think I was very clear about in-full-time, pre-pandemic levels of instruction in-person being a priority of mine. That has not changed. As the guidelines have been written currently, if universal masking is enforced, the number of quarantines is limited because of the guideline that states that if students are three feet distance and universally masked, then it's not considered a close contact. So this is another point that's, that provides some difficulty for me. While I'd like to see some eventual flexibility with masking, I'm concerned about quarantining. Some of what we saw last year in the spring, when we came back to five hours a day, five days a week, was actually heartbreaking to see the sheer numbers of children quarantined without access to instruction. And I see it coming again, and it's going to be at greater numbers if they're unmasked under the current guidelines. That's frustrating to me. I think it's a shame to quarantine healthy children. And I think we saw last year that, that we had little to no spread within our schools. So the fact that we're quarantining healthy children and having them miss out on that valuable instruction for really what was very little reason, as we didn't have a single one of those children come back as positive case, it's a shame. So I'd really like to just highlight how the guidelines at this point tie our hands to some extent with regard to masking, because it's going to increase our quarantining if we were to make masks optional at this point, if we do not institute universal masking or continue the universal masking. As it relates to that, I have some additional concerns, particularly in the lunchrooms. We're already seeing some quarantining from exposure in the lunchrooms. And as it is right now, the county health department is not allowing us to utilize options 3 or 4 of the quarantine guidelines. And if you don't know what those are, those are the options to test to stay. Actually, I think 3 is test at day 7, test at day 6, come back on day 7, something like that. And then, and then option 4 is the test at day 1, 3, 5, and 7, stay in school as long as those tests are negative. Those guidelines are there, they try to keep kids in school, but unfortunately, the county is not allowing us to utilize those options 3 and 4 in the lunchroom. So I think we have a problem there. I'd hate to see our numbers really explode and... I'd hate to see our numbers really explode in terms of kids quarantining. So I think we've got to do, and I'm asking the administration to really look at what we can do to provide some, either additional distance between children during lunches or possibly even temporarily reducing the amount of time they're unmasked while eating, or maybe we consider outdoor options for lunches, at least while the weather is decent. I just think at this point, we've got to think outside the box. We've got to find ways to keep these kids in school. Let's see. One of the parents talked about sports for homeschool kids. I'd like to see, or at least hear the administration's rationale for not allowing that. I think given the current climate and the circumstances that we're dealing with today, there may be parents who aren't comfortable sending their kids to school in person, so they've chosen to homeschool or would like to at some point hold them and put them in homeschool, but they want them to still have access to potentially outdoor sports. We have a parent here today that would refer her child, her children not spend seven hours a day in a mask, but would still like them to participate in sports. I think given the current circumstances, that's something maybe we should consider. And I guess I would like some more information on what the rationale is to not allow that. And let's see. Lastly, the access to instruction during quarantines that a couple of the other board members talked about. I'm frustrated with all that we learned in the last year that we are still this year or that we are now quarantining students without any access to instruction. If my child is going to be gone for two weeks because they were forced to quarantine, they should have more than just access to their assignments. They should have access to instruction. It doesn't have to be live instruction, it could be recordings. There's districts doing it all sorts of different ways. It might be audio recording, it might be audio and video recording, it could be access to online videos that a teacher provides. But some sort of access to instruction is necessary for students that are quarantined. So I'd like to ask that that be considered. And lastly, I think we need to look at our COVID-19 data dashboard. I think it's lacking information, and I think it's misleading. Last Friday, if you looked at the dashboard, there was one positive case in the district and 90 kids quarantined. So I asked the question, how is it that we have 90 kids quarantined from one positive case? Well, the misleading thing is, is that none of, besides the positive case, none of those kids quarantined had anything to do with the positive case. They quit, some of them were because of, they were symptomatic kids, just, you know, they had some of the symptoms that are on the list for COVID-19. Some of them were for exposures outside of school. I'd like to ask that we look at that dashboard and maybe provide some additional detail. I think it's alarming to parents and families when they see those numbers and don't have any idea what they need. There's districts, there's plenty of examples out there where they're providing additional detail about actual exposures in school and really kind of get into the detail of what, why kids are quarantined or how much exposure is actually happening within our schools. So just asking that that be an additional thing that the administration look at, and I'm happy to work with you on finding examples of other districts that do it in a way that I think is maybe more informative for our families. Thank you.
Any other board member have comments?
First of all, thanks to all of our board members who have spoken on this. I think, sorry, I don't know what's wrong with my mic. I think that they have really pointed out a lot of great things that, thoughtful moments that we're thinking through as we go through this ready-to-learn plan. This is, thank you. This is very, very tough on everyone. I understand that. It's very emotional. It also reveals some serious schisms within our community. While one side thinks they are standing up for the safety of their children, the other side believes the same thing just as strongly, and we need to understand that. It's tearing apart communities. We've seen that firsthand on social media here and in school board meetings across the nation. My personal goal has been to get the kids back to school full-time as normal as possible. I had high hopes that the mask optional policy would work. In early July, it looked like it might work. We had low community spread and low hospitalizations. Then the Delta variant took hold and things changed, and I watched it with dread as things changed. For example, in Anderson, Indiana, in just one school, just their elementary school, during their first week of school under a mask optional policy, they quarantined 100 kids because of COVID cases. In Greater Clark County Schools, also in Indiana, they quarantined over 1,100 kids in the first week, also under a mask optional policy. Both districts have reversed mask mandate, and the state, and this is why I'm using these examples, the state isn't even under a governor's mandate. I don't want this to happen here. I want our kids to be in school. With kids missing school because of long quarantines, that does no good to anybody. We also know that ISB is following through with putting districts on probation. I don't want to jeopardize the in-person education of our students, plus the ability of our athletes to compete and students to do what they love in extracurriculars. So we may disagree on this, but I think it's more important to keep kids in school as much as possible, even with masks. Heck, I don't like wearing masks either. I have to lecture one for hours a day. It's not fun. But we know now that even vaccinated folks can transmit the Delta variant, and more and more kids are being infected unless they like the previous variants. And a mask can help prevent some transmission indoors and within classrooms time before it, especially for those kids who cannot or who choose not to be vaccinated. I sincerely hope this variant burns through, as it looks to have in the U.K. I hope that the governor will then loosen the indoor mask mandate, but until then, I'm not willing to ignore or overturn the state mandate for our district. I would like to revisit it in a few months.
All right, I have some brief comments. Back in the spring, I voted to send the kids back to a normal schedule, and we've now done that in the fall here. Last month Superintendent Wood identified discretion in the rules that the CDC had put down and exercised it to select a mask optional strategy for the return to learn in the fall. I didn't stand in the way of that decision. This month, as we've discussed here tonight, that discretion was taken away. The state is now mandating masks. We don't have a choice. This is a school board meeting as a reminder. It is not a court. We up here are not judges. This is not, simply not the right forum to challenge the state mandate. Personally, as a lawyer, I'm an officer of the court and a member of the bar of the state bar. I cannot and will not defy state mandate. I don't have a choice. Let's talk about some of the consequences. We've already heard about IHSA's recent decision. But if you refer back to Charlotte's presentation about the budget, if ISB put this district on probation and followed through with some of its threats, it could take away up to 20% of the budget for the next, for the next school year. We can't afford that kind of devastating, the cuts, the devastating cuts that result from that. They would, we just can't afford it. That's $10 to $15 million. I've discussed this with Charlotte. On top of that, we have, the district receives, as was kind of referred to as a budget, the district receives grants from the state and federal governments. Those grant agreements that the district has entered into require the district to comply with state, local, federal regulations and laws. That would put those agreements themselves in jeopardy. So again, I mentioned IHSA and what the decisions they've recently made. I simply am not in favor of voting for something that would lead to a football team to have to forfeit games, or the soccer team, or the softball team, or the volleyball team. That's, we just don't have a choice, in my opinion. Lastly, there was a reference to the conditions, the local conditions, when Superintendent Wood last month made the decision to go to mask optional. Yesterday, St. McCounty Department of Public Health reported 125 new positive cases of COVID in the county. Those are numbers that are similar to the numbers we saw when the kids were in hybrid or learning remotely. I do not want to return to those conditions. I don't want to return to the kids learning, having to learn remotely or having the district adopt a hybrid learning. Again, as I said initially, I voted to send the kids back to a normal schedule in the spring. We have done that, and I want to stick to it. So thank you for coming, honey.
Can I, I think it is, but can I can answer potentially, is there Doug, can you, or is there someone, I don't know if Dusty's in the room, but can someone answer the question as to why the district does not allow homeschool students to participate in sports? And can we have a discussion about whether or not that might be something we could consider, at least during these extenuating circumstances temporarily?
I know, speaking with Mr. Burton, you know, this is something that our CSA collectively, also all the schools, the athletic directors, they know a lot of that either. And it is specific to some of the academic expectations and benchmarks that are having to be maintained. I know that, for example, if you have a student, you know, many of our students do extremely well academically, and we work with homeschool families, and I know that many of them do well also. But if there were a case where there were a student where it wasn't monitored properly, some of them did become ineligible. There are forfeitures and things of that nature that impact the outcome of the team or the ability for them to comply. So I know those are some of the factors that are taken into consideration. And like I said, the CSA collectively also follows this policy, so to speak. But Mr. Burton's here, if you have some additional questions?
Yeah, I'm just kind of reiterating. Can you hear me?
I mean, we can't hear you through the microphone, but I can hear you.
I'm just speaking, I'm not. Just reiterating what Dr. Wood said, that when a homeschool student would have to, it's very hard to monitor and have them turn in eligibility at high school level, it's a concern that doing it with fidelity, that's important to us, that's part of our decision-making process, and not having homeschool students at the high school level participate. We recognize at middle school level that we do have students that take away age groups oftentimes for homeschool in preparation, but then attend our high schools and become full-fledged students in the high school and participate in athletics. The CSA, none of the schools in the CSA have homeschool students participate in athletics with a full-time homeschool students. We had a meeting today, and so I asked again, see if anything changed, and it's not, none of the schools are doing so this year as well. It's been a longstanding practice of such.
Just wondering if there could be some kind of parameters established, just given the current circumstances where there was standards that we established and consistent reporting from that homeschool family of maybe even weekly grades like we require for our current student athletes. I just, you know, look, we are telling families, these are our rules, you have to wear, send your kid in a mask, and if you want to attend our schools, then that's, you know, those are the rules for our students, whether you agree with it or not. And I just think it might be time that we look at options for those families that may want to consider homeschooling so their kids don't have to be masked all day long. Now, that said, those student athletes would be expected, obviously, to follow any rules that we have our student athletes, such as masking for the indoor sports. So, you know, that's just my opinion. I think that we're in some really uncharted territories here. Who am I to say that this mask, wearing a mask all day, isn't impacting a student's mental health or isn't impacting their ability to learn well? Maybe they have a hard of hearing and they're having difficulty hearing a teacher, or for whatever reason, a family decides that homeschooling is best for them at this point. I think that maybe we ought to consider just temporarily allowing this if we can establish some parameters for those students. Thanks for your answers.
Any further discussion on the return to learn plan? Steve, are you interested in making any motions for that?
I would make a motion without it being passed, so it's, return to learn. The governor's mandate's 30 days. I don't believe it is law. It's a mandate. But we'll take a look at ideas and sit down and see where we're at, unless somebody else wants to make a motion.
I have a question about Laura's comment a second ago. Is your comment related to the return to learn, or is it separate? If we're getting ready to vote on the interview.
Are we voting on return to learn?
I don't know, we're having a discussion.
Yeah.
No, 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 we're not, there's no vote unless, but I wanted to give folks an opportunity to make a motion related to.
I'm just suggesting that as it relates to return to learn, that maybe we ought to consider a component of that return to learn plan being the option for homeschool students to participate or try out for, although, you know what, I do want to make a point. We're dealing with a Title IX issue right now, where we're trying to increase female participation, and we are potentially turning away, if the family that's reached out to us, the Ms. Hamel that spoke tonight, and she, I think, reached out to us prior to the board meeting via email as well, I believe that was to all of the board members, you know, that's two female student athletes that participate in multiple sports, and, you know, we're trying to increase female participation. Well, here's a way that we can potentially increase female participation. I just think, given the circumstances, I would love to see us consider a component of this particular return to learn plan, just for the time being, while we're dealing with the COVID environment, that we consider a homeschool option for participating in our sports and other IHSA activities. in, in, uh, our sports and other IHSA activities.
I, I would support the idea of exploring that with the administration. I, I don't know that there's anything in the Return of Learn Plan. I'm concerned about voting on something tonight, because, you know, I, I don't know if there's anything.
I fully respect that. I do know that we haven't had an, uh, an opportunity to fully vet this. I, um, would hate to see us waste too much time making that, that decision. I understand we only need once a month, so that's the challenge here. Um, but yeah, I, I really would like to see us explore this and have the administration potentially come up with, um, some parameters with how, for how this could work.
And, and particularly in light of the comments about the Title IX situation, uh, but I, I guess I'd ask Superintendent Wood to, uh, reach out to, uh, legal counsel about, to discuss that issue in the context of Title IX, as well as, uh, our obligations, uh, which I don't, I don't know what they are, with respect to the, uh, the CSA conference. Okay, if there are no further comments on the Return to Learn Plan, then we'll move to the next, uh, section on the agenda, which is consent items. That's, uh, section 7.1, minutes of the regular board meeting, section 7.2, minutes of facilities and grounds committee, uh, 7.3 is the treasurer financial report, 7.4, school district accounts payable, 7.5, school activity account reports, 7.6, board requests, 7.7 is a policy for second reading. Does anyone, any board member wish to pull any of the items in section seven on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, then entertain a motion to approve section seven, the consent items.
Second.
Ashley, please call the board.
Stephen, then Andrea.
Thank you.
Fitz.
Yes.
Frederick.
Yes.
Colra.
Yes.
Sundas.
Yes.
Brayley.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
Barrett.
Yes. Next section is section eight, personnel consent agenda items. We've got items 8.1 through 8.42. Does any board member like, uh, would any board member like to pull any of the items in section eight, personnel consent agenda? Seeing none, then entertain a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda items.
Second. Colra.
Yes.
Brayley.
Yes.
Sundas.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
Fitz.
Yes.
Frederick.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes. Section nine, new business. Section 9.1 is, uh, a grant for school maintenance project. That's you, Charlotte?
That's me. Or convo of me and my thoughts if your questions get too difficult. Um, I hope everybody can hear me. Uh, the Safe Board of Education, um, from time to time takes available funding for schools to use for maintenance projects in their buildings. Um, we had one two years ago, they just now put more money back into the program. This is round one, there may be a round two. Uh, last time, they were short funding, they only did the round one, but we did get the $50,000 we asked for. We think we can get the $50,000 again if we apply for it, and the $50,000 will go to offset the costs associated with the, the high school growth issue that we've been dealing with. But I need a, a vote of the board approving our ability to apply for those grant funds, and then later, Kyle, you'll be signing a document verifying that through the process.
Okay, so it's simply, the request is for the board to approve the grant application essentially for $50,000.
Correct.
Anyone have any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the grant application for $50,000 for the school maintenance grant?
Second. Brayley.
Yes.
Sundas.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
Fitz.
Yes.
Colra.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes. Next up is section 10, communications. We've got future board meeting dates. We've already talked about the September board meeting for the budget, that's September 27th, that's on Monday night at 6:30. Uh, the finance committee meeting is on September 21st, and the facilities and ground committee meeting, I'm not sure what the date is.
September 1st, Wednesday.
Yes, the first Wednesday of September, which I think is, I think that is September 8th. All right, next up, moving on to section 10.2. Uh, this is an opportunity for visitors to address the school board concerning any topic, not limited to an agenda topic. So if anyone has any comments about any topic, please step up.
Hi, it's me again, Jerry Potts. After listening to comments, especially on the Return to Learn program, Mr. Barry, I love you. Uh, I feel like, as president of the school board, you should recuse or resign yourself from the school board. You have, in this meeting, admitted that you are a member of the state bar, you have a law license, and obvious, and you will not vote against anything, ASPE, or DPA, or the governor mandates, because that could hurt your license. But what about the children? Are you putting the license and your private life before the children? Sure looks like it. And in addition to that, we talk about all these rising cases. PCR tests don't work, they're admitting it, they're saying these cases, PCR tests are not good, they're replacing them as of the first of the year, because they can't tell if it's the flu or COVID. There are so many other resources available, ivermectin, hydroxychloroquine, that why aren't we succumbing to mandates that make no sense? The numbers, they go up, they go down, it depends on who you're talking to. And at this point, nobody is believable. I don't care which side you're on, and I'm gonna lose the mic, mic drop. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'm back, because it wasn't here, it wasn't, I thought maybe the homeschooling and sports thing would be part of the Return to Learn Plan, so I came up earlier, but now I'm glad I have the opportunity to come back, um, because it's, I mean, I, you said something about checking with legal counsel, but it's very clear, I've been a lot of homeschool, um, groups, and I've checked, and it's very clear that it is really just a school decision. I really don't think that we should be making a decision just because it's what CSA does. Um, so I think that, and as far as eligibility, I mean, the program that I'm working on is accredited, that it's approved by the NCAA, um, and I am more than happy to submit rates deeply to prove that my kids are eligible. But what I don't want to do is wait until the next board meeting to find out if this is a possibility, because my kids don't want to be in school. It was masks, they don't want to be there, they want to become schooled, retire from it, so I would leave, and especially if we're gonna start dumping them when my vaccine mandates, my kids will not use them. So I would really appreciate it, it is a simple, I feel like it's a simple request. Um, so I would like to find out when I'm going to get this mask, and I really hope all that it can be soon, and not the next board meeting. So I don't know if you guys can forgive me that or not, but that's what I request.
Thank you.
All right, and once again, um, my question's actually about busing, uh, it's more of, just kind of a deep question. Uh, my son, who attends here, uh, goes to the, uh, Capital Area Center, uh, after, uh, doing bill at school, but there's no busing there, and we just want to find out why that is. Uh, we have other districts that Springfield and Rochester, Athens, Tri- uh, Tri-, uh, Tri-Si, excuse me, they all have busing going back and forth. And I understand that we do have a bus problem or issue with weather, because dealing with, uh, participants who want to volunteer or get, uh, employed as far as drivers are concerned, but if we are having children who are attending the Career Center and having to, to get there, but unfortunately may not have the transportation to do so, then why are they still being participants if the transportation is not available? Um, so I'm just looking for some answers to that, uh, so we get, you know, best, to try to find out what's the best route for us to take, you know, because we do have parents that do work and not, uh, come and take their child back and forth, or may not have, uh, their child, may have transportation of their own to get back forth to the center if all of, uh, their classes are not here. So if you guys can give us some information on that and explain that to me, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, um, I'm Jason Reddick, and after living in Kentucky for nearly 10 years, our family decided to move back to Illinois last Christmas. We moved to Chatham, and we decided to relocate. The school district was a big reason that influenced our decision between going to any other district in the area. We chose to move to Chatham because of the, the reputation of the school being one of the best in the areas. Little did I know, when choosing, uh, this district, there was a member on the school board making decisions over my child's education that would publicly support the Three Percenters. This is a group that's affiliated with white supremacy and racism, and is labeled a terrorist group by Canada. There will be people that say this is a freedom of speech, and I agree. Everyone has a right to their opinions, beliefs, and speech, but freedom of speech does not come without consequences. And one consequence to publicly supporting a group such as this should be not being able to support or represent our community publicly. As a community, we should be aware of how this support reflects on our community and how it looks to the rest of everyone, because that would have been part of a decision when I was moving here. I just wanted everyone, I'm not sure what actions we could take, but I want to be on the record that old warbird murderer, Patrick Fitz, was in public wearing a shirt supporting the Three Percenters and posting it on Facebook for everyone to see. And to me, this behavior is appalling and unacceptable.
Does anyone have any additional comments on any subject?
You know, I didn't have the opportunity to address the transportation issue, um, because that wasn't really necessarily on the, the agenda, but I guess I would like to start a conversation about how are we going to address this bus issue? Um, I know they're making progress, I understand, we had a personnel issue with the director of, of transportation who's since resigned. Um, I understand that, and I'm appreciative that we have the former, um, retired director of transportation, Mr. Lovelace, um, back helping to, uh, work on those routes. Um, but beyond that, we've got a severe bus driver shortage that, um, is a problem throughout the country and, um, and certainly not unique to us. But I want to know what we are or what we can do to address it. What kinds of, can we have, I understand that they're union, uh, the bus drivers are union, so we are, um, constrained to some degree by the, um, union contract. The panel needs to down with the union, have discussions about potential incentives for sign-on bonuses or incentives of some kind for bus drivers. Can we talk about, um, the bus driver's rate of pay? Um, I just, we've got to do something to attract drivers to this district, and I know this is not, there's no simple solution, but just to throw up our hands and say, well, we're short bus drivers, so this is gonna have to be good enough, uh, I don't, I don't think that's acceptable. So I think as a district, we have a responsibility to work on this issue, and beyond trying to, uh, rearrange the routes to provide some additional efficiencies, which I know is happening, and it is beginning to improve things, I think we've got to sit down and figure out how we can address, or begin to address this bus driver shortage.
Doug, you want to address that? I mean, I know that the board earlier in the summer or the spring voted to increase at least some of the benefits associated with the bus drivers to attract, uh, new drivers, but I mean, obviously, we had an issue with the, the opening in schools here in the fall, so if you want to give a brief history and tell us, Doug, what the plan is to improve it.
Well, we're, you know, on track, and it comes by Morris, uh, some of the visions of routes, um, that have been helpful, we spent some times that we're working with. One of the issues, I mean, every year, at the beginning of the year, we always had transportation difficulties, particularly with, with routes. And one of the issues that compounds the situation when we don't have the number of drivers that you need, is when we have, because we want to afford transportation to all of our stations, that's something that you have a right to and, and children deserve. But when we do go into the registration, what happens, not an excuse, this just happens until we get it ironed out, that there are boxes to check and information provided whether or not children are going to ride buses or where they're going to be transported. Um, and in many cases, that box doesn't get checked under registration, and we might have several more spins at particular stops than, than we anticipated. When that occurs, we have to go back to the drawing board and begin to reroute once again. And, uh, you know, our, our staff have been working extremely hard to do this, we'd love to, we've, I know that, uh, we've certainly gone out to many job boards, um, working with organizations to try to attract, you are absolutely right, that's not, uh, unique to us, and, uh, it's not a matter of throwing hands up, because that's never the case. Our goal is to continue to try to attract bus drivers as best we can. We've talked about bonuses in the past. Uh, one of the things that we've been trying to do is increase the number of hours, the threshold for benefits for our drivers. Many of them, they drive in the morning, they drive in the afternoon. We do have some bus drivers that take on some additional responsibilities, such as labor and supervisor, perhaps working in the kitchen, uh, to give to that threshold so that they do qualify for those benefits. Um, so we're, we're trying to get creative as to how we can better track. You know, at the end of the day as well, we, we do work with the union, and there are certain parameters we can constrain that we have. Um, we have, and not to be confused, it's, we have a, uh, PCEA, which is our education association, which represents our teachers, and then we also have a support staff union, so it is a separate union. So we work with them, but it, it is, there's no, and I've, I've actually had several of our parents, you know, I've had some great conversations about, you know, what we can do. Parents have been wonderful in providing some of the transportation to help alleviate some of the congestion that we have. What I would beg and I'll please, this is on video, but also to you, uh, for anyone that has a CDO and, and have, would like to drive buses or look out, to actually work with our district, we're doing that every day, and, uh, sometimes it's just more, uh, we're going to be reaching out also to some of the additional local organizations. I mean, I'm on the, uh, Chatham Chamber, uh, I work with them, there's Springfield- I mean, I'm on the Chatham Chamber. I work with them. There's Springfield Chamber. The big issue is, was alluded to earlier, it's not an excuse. I wish I had a solution for it. Is that the minimum number of drivers that are out there, we're all competing for them regionally. And so it is problematic. Or even on some of our routes that we assign for athletic teams, when they're going to events for our boys and our girls, sometimes it's not, we're unable to fill a particular route. And so we have activity buses, which does not require a CDO. And some of our coaches have taken on some of that responsibility. Of course, with smaller teams, we couldn't get the football team an activity bus. That wouldn't, that wouldn't work out. But at the end of the day, we're trying to look at some creative ways to attract candidates. And I'm, or all of you that are out there or listening, that if someone is interested, we'd certainly love to talk to them. But we're gonna continue working and see what other opportunities there are. Because it does boil down to compensation, benefits, those types of things. That's really about transport. And again, not an excuse. This particular job, there's a couple of hours in the morning, there's a couple hours in the afternoon. Right now, with the current state as it is, where many individuals are receiving checks while staying at home, and I understand, you know, the support that many of our individuals and families receive. That's wonderful and deserving. But it's also been an incentive for some not to seek some of the positions that we have. And so that compounds and makes it difficult as well. But as we stated earlier, we do have 30, I think 31 drivers. We even have our, we have a lot of our administrative assistants who also have a CDO and drives. So we are tapping into other individuals in the district, not just us, our transportation department. But we're gonna continue to do that. We're gonna continue to modify routes. As I expressed in my letter, I sincerely apologize for any inconvenience that has been created. One of the things that was a challenge with our transitions and the difficulties we had with the department, there's no excuse for a parent whose child has not been brought back home in a timely manner not to have received a phone call or a push-out communication, and that happened on two occasions. So I like what was mentioned earlier in terms of, there are tools out there in relation to GPS. If that's something that we can explore, we certainly will. Mr. Bryan is correct. We have purchased cameras. Installation of those cameras were just about to occur prior to departure of one of our employees. So they're there. We're going to get them on the buses. I think that's going to help alleviate some of the challenges that we've had. But I just want to let you know that I have a lot of staff that are working very hard to try to get this right. It's not, it's not, we haven't fixed it yet. I have received some wonderful responses from parents and guardians in regards to the changes that have occurred. But it doesn't excuse the ones that we're still working with. We're gonna continue to work with them. I've told parents and contacted the transportation department. If you're unable to do so, please contact my office. I've been able to provide assistance in making sure that some of those things get addressed. And we're gonna continue to do that. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of a synopsis of the things that we're doing and trying to do. But at the end of the day, it's human resource, and that's been our greatest challenge. But once again, if you do know of anyone that is interested, they can contact me personally. I would be more than happy to help them secure a position within our district, being that they have the right qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wood. I do want to say, I didn't mean to suggest that we as a district are throwing up our hands on this issue. I just want to be sure that we don't be complacent and we've done everything we can because I feel like there's always more.
It certainly has. It's been one of the, that's what keeps me up at night. Because my greatest fear is a student being left somewhere and not getting picked up. Over everything, that's, that keeps me up at night. It keeps our staff up at night. We don't want that to happen. We're gonna do everything we can to try to alleviate some of the issues that we have.
I hope the transportation staff knows that we see the work that they're putting in.
Absolutely.
And the hours they're putting in to try to remedy the situation. Because I do appreciate that.
And I, no, and I extend that to them. I just, I don't want our parents to buy my say to these things. It's not an excuse. I'm sure that we're gonna have a couple more things that we have to address and tweak to make it the best that we can. We want it to be a safe trip, and we want it to be a timely trip. And that's been a challenge that, again, not to excuse it, but when I speak with my colleagues around the state, this is quite frankly outside of COVID. A real close, real close second is, is our transportation. So hopefully, we can continue to work on it.
And Doug, if I could just add for the record, I want to, Laura referred to this. I want to express my gratitude to Jim Loveless for stepping back into the ring and having retired to help fill the gap after the departure of his replacement section.
You know what? Jim has been wonderful, and he's really working more of an assistant than anything. You know, he's someone that we can call. He's someone that we can, you know, email. He's been here, he was the director for 21 years, and just has an unmatched knowledge of the transportation in the district. So he appreciates it.
I have. Okay, I'm just making a statement on behalf. Okay, on behalf of the diversity, equity, and inclusion ad hoc committees, we're charged with two things relevant to much of the discussion tonight. One is Title IX, so we would be interested for sure in talking with Dusty and people with Dusty about some of the concerns that have been raised tonight. And the second has to do with sort of hoping to uphold the mission and value statement that has been put forward by our district. And that was also sort of reaffirmed last summer by the superintendent and by the previous board. And so I really think that those concerns are still relevant. Members of the community express support for those concerns. But also just really interested in how we would implement these aspects of our mission and value statement. So I just, you know, want to highlight and acknowledge that we have a lot of room to grow as a district in terms of some of our mission and value statement. And I think that that makes the work of this ad hoc committee all more super relevant and important. And so we're really looking forward to working on behalf of the community, on behalf of the students, on behalf of the diversifying teaching staff, to really create an environment that is welcoming and inclusive for all of our community members.
Any other board member have any further comments? If not, then certainly entertain a motion to adjourn. Did you get that?
Yes, I did.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, close. All right, you adjourned. And thanks, everyone, for coming. And again, we appreciate your patience given we started.